Everyone join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda are the minutes of the regular city council meeting held on October 11th and a special city council meeting held on October 28th, 2022. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to make any changes, additions, or subtractions to the minutes? If not, can't hear me? I'll move my mic closer. We're going to remodel this place and get a little better sound system, so. I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
We're at 9C. We have a late arrival. That's not on the agenda.
Oh, we're just doing minutes right now.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I skipped ahead. I apologize.
Okay. A motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the regular city council meeting minutes from October 11th and a special city council meeting held October 28th. Discussion, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The regular agenda needs to be approved, and if there's no changes on the regular agenda, I would entertain a motion to adopt the regular agenda.
So moved.
That's where I need to add 9C.
Okay. We're adding an item?
Yes, Mayor. Late arrival for a special event liquor application.
Okay. Any other changes? Is there a second to the motion?
Seconded.
Discussion, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The consent agenda is before the council. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered separately in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to either add or remove an item from the consent agenda? All right, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Discussion, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this time, I'll adjourn the regular meeting and call to order a public hearing to consider the proposed assessments for the abatement of trees in 2021 and 2022, and I would call on our Public Works Director, Sean King. Sean?
Mayor and Council, this is going to be the assessment for the trees that were removed this year, diseased or hazardous trees.
Okay.
Public Works reviewed that and moves to adopt the assessment role for that tree abatement.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded, so is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to the proposed assessments of abatement of trees for 2021, 2022? Hearing none, that public hearing is closed. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and the assessment role for the tree abatement is adopted. At this time, I'll call to order a public hearing to consider the proposed assessments for construction of curb, gutter, approaches, and sidewalk improvements for the year 2021, 2022, and again, I would call on our Public Works Director, Sean King.
Mayor and Council, this is just our yearly curb and gutter replacement, sidewalk, and approaches.
Is there anyone?
Go ahead.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to the proposed assessments for curb, gutter, approaches, and sidewalk improvements? Hearing none, that public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead, ma'am. Would you please come up to the microphone?
I really don't want to, but.
We're friendly.
I live on Willow Street, so this is, you're talking about the curbs right now?
Yeah, will you give us your name and address for our minutes?
Annette Gunterman, 1010 West Willow Street.
Thank you. Go ahead.
The curb, I was harassed through the whole project last, this spring, by the construction workers, and I contacted Ben and John. But I've already got cracking on my sidewalk and the curb. The curb cracked pretty quick after it was being poured. They don't feel it being fair. I don't know how that's going to be handled. That's going to all be replaced by next year like they claim? Because we're paying for, the work is not very good. And I don't, I don't feel it fair for us homeowners that we have to pick up the bill where there was just terrible work done throughout the whole project.
Kelsey, do you have a comment?
Uh, Mayor and Council, I think this is technically item C for the Willow Street, Home Street, and Fraser Street improvements.
Okay.
Yeah, I heard.
Uh, this is actually a different project that we're talking about for this hearing.
Okay, that will all be coming up?
Yep, it'll be coming up here next.
Sorry, I was only saying, I'm really upset.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else want to speak to the issue of the curb, gutter, approaches, and sidewalk improvements? Hearing none, that public hearing is closed. Madeline?
Public Works reviewed the assessment role and moves to adopt that assessment role for 21, 22.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the proposed assessments for curb, gutter, approach, and sidewalk. Discussion, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this time, I'll call to order a public hearing to consider the proposed assessments for Willow Street, Home Street, and Fraser Street improvements for the year 2022. City Engineer John Pratt, do you want to? Go ahead, John.
Mayor and Council, I'll wait for Kerry to get this queued up. Okay. We'll do a quick presentation here, again, as the mayor introduced here. This is the assessment hearing for the, what we call the Willow, Fraser, and Home Street project, reconstruction project that spanned over the last couple of summers. Why we're here tonight specifically is to talk about the special assessments that have been mailed out related to the project. It's a requirement of state statute 429. So again, just a reminder tonight, we're focused pretty directly on the special assessments that are pending for that project. So I'll go through a little bit of background. It's been a couple of years since we've done a presentation on this, of why we did the project, what was done. I'll then get into the final project costs, special assessments, and then the council will have a time for questions and comments after the presentation. So again, this project had a number of pieces to it. Willow Street being the largest one from Cheryl to Washington Avenue. Also Fraser Street from Washington to McKinley. Home Street from Washington to Lincoln. And then the alley between Holmes and Fraser along the east side of Washington Avenue in the downtown area. A little bit of background on this. These projects have been on the capital improvement plan for a number of years. I want to say going back at least five years, if not more, primarily because the streets and utilities were in tough shape or deteriorating for various reasons. So back in March of '20 is sort of when we began work on, in earnest on the project, working with, just scoping it out, getting some funding applications put together to Public Facilities Authority and working on our environmental documentation. Later in the summer of '20, we actually started some of the preliminary design and survey work, moving into the fall and winter of 2020 and 2021. We got into the final design and the bidding and permitting for the project, and then finally constructing the project over the last two summers. So a lot of different reasons that we had deficiency on this project. So starting off a little bit with the street, really the best thing I could say there is we had streets that were varying in age, anywhere from 22 to 45 plus years old, just cracking potholes, things of that nature that needed to be corrected. Storm sewer wasn't a major driving factor for the project, but there were some areas, particularly in the Washington Avenue alley, where we had some structural failures. Outside of that, we didn't really have any hydraulic issues with the storm sewer, but in a lot of cases, we ended up replacing storm sewer just simply to facilitate other improvements. The sanitary sewer really varied location to location. On Willow Street between Cheryl and Campbell, we had fairly new PVC pipe that was in good condition. As you move to the east and get into Campbell to Rossman, we had old, vetrified clay tile that was in poor condition, probably 70 years old or better. Then Rossman to Washington, we really had PVC pipe that was actually in pretty good condition, replaced in the 90s, but it lacked capacity that we needed due to growth within the system, so. Again, still with sewer on Fraser Street, we had the old clay tile pipe in very poor condition. Didn't have a good age on that, but probably more than 70 years old. And then Home Street, again, back to some pipe that was in pretty good shape. So very mixed bag with the sewer. Water, sort of the same scenario. On Willow Street from Cheryl to Summit, we had some areas of newer PVC pipe and some areas of old cast iron pipe. All of it, though, was undersized. Then Summit to Washington, we had good pipe that was of adequate size and capacity. Fraser Street, we had old pipe that needed to be replaced, pushing 70 years old. And then Home Street, again, we had good pipe, no need for any improvement there. So that was sort of the driving factors behind the project. What we ended up doing is with the sewer, we ended up replacing sewer on Willow Street from Campbell to the CP Railroad. Again, that was just for old pipe. And then from the railroad to Washington, we replaced the pipe, but that was driven by capacity-related issues, not necessarily the condition of the pipe. Fraser Street, we had poor pipe, replaced that, and then no replacement on Willow from Cheryl to Campbell or on Home Street. Water main improvements on Willow Street from Cheryl to Summit, we needed to increase that size for better system capacity. We were undersized in that area. On Fraser Street from Washington to McKinley, we replaced that old cast iron pipe, and then no replacement on any other portions of Willow or Home Street. All those areas were in good shape. Sewer and water services, so these would be the individual service lateral lines that come off of the mains that we just got done overviewing. Generally, we did replacement on those, usually with a new 1-inch water and a 4-inch sewer service, and we go from the main to the edge of the right-of-way or to the edge of the property, and that's the limits of what we would replace under the city project. We did not replace service laterals in all locations, especially on Willow. It was a mixed bag. Some had been replaced over time. So we looked at those as we went through the project. Some of them were replaced in the 90s, so we tried to leave those that we thought were in good shape and then replace the ones that we felt like were getting to the end of their life. From the right-of-way to house, however, that's a property owner responsibility to replace that line. Storm sewer improvements, I alluded to this. We sort of replaced it as we needed to. That wasn't a driving factor in the project overall, but a lot of times that storm sewer is the most shallow utility we have, and we need to remove and replace that just to get to the water main and the sanitary sewer. We did expand the collection system and inlet capacity in a few areas to meet current design standards. And then again, back in the alley, that Washington Avenue alley, that stuff was in awful shape, and we did a full replacement there. So street and sidewalk on Willow Street. Effectively, we reconstructed Willow Street to a pretty similar width and alignment as what was there before we started the project. The big difference would be the concrete surface that was put in on Willow from Washington to Rossman, but from Rossman out to Cheryl, that remained a bituminous or an asphalt surface. We added a crossing node at Rossman Avenue just due to the high level of pedestrian crossing there with the school, and then some turf boulevard, replaced the turf boulevards and added some trees where we had to do some tree removal. Home Street, most people probably wouldn't notice the difference, but we did actually narrow that street by about 3 and 1/2 feet. Gave us a little bit more sidewalk and boulevard space to work with just to improve sort of pedestrian movement through there. Still maintained the on-street parking, two-way traffic, things like that. So added colored textured boulevard to match sort of that downtown area. Outside of that, there wasn't any real significant changes beyond just the replacement. Fraser Street, that did change quite a bit. We narrowed that by about seven feet in most locations. We added a pedestrian crossing at the clinic where we have a high amount of crossing activities or in the mid-block area, added a signal for that crossing. And then we added a shared center left turn lane, again, just because of all the ingress and egress traffic with the clinic and hospital. We eliminated that on-street parking in that area. Didn't feel like we needed that. There was lots of ample off-street parking lot parking available. And then again, did the colored and textured concrete with trees similar to the rest of the downtown. The alley, not a lot to say. We just simply replaced the alley with a concrete surface. So we are now on to probably what most people are here to listen to would be the project costs and financing portion. So the final project costs, looking through all the water, the sewer, stormwater, street, streetscapes, things like that, we came in just under $6.5 million for the project. Overall, I think we're down about $200,000 from what we had projected for a budget when we took bids for the project a couple of years ago. So that's some positive news. Financing and assessment, so this project is funded by a combination of a number of sources. City utility funds, so that'd be the water and sewer funds, those bills that we all pay for using sewer and water. Those funds pick up a portion of it. General tax levy pays for a portion of it. We use something called municipal state aid funds to help pay for a portion of the street and stormwater costs. In effect, those are our share of gas tax that are collected by the state that come back to the city. And then we also got a low-interest loan from Minnesota Public Facilities Authority to help finance a portion of the sewer and the water costs. And then the balance is paid by special assessments to the adjacent property owners. So these assessable costs are determined in accordance with the city's special assessment policy, which is in place to help guide how we allocate project costs like this between the city and special assessments. So for sewer and water, what the policy says is we assess 75% of the standard cost for sewer and water, and that's defined as an 8-inch sewer or water main. So if we have larger mains than that, they'd be considered oversized mains, and that the city picks up that oversizing cost. They pay the remaining 25% and any looping or non-assessable footage that we might have on a project. The city pays for the replacement of utilities that are less than 40 years old, and I bring that up because we had some of that, like I alluded to, on Willow Street, where we had utilities where really in okay shape, but they lacked the capacity, and they were under 40 years old. So the city, the utility funds end up funding those replacements. Service laterals are assessed 100% per connection from a standard main. From a street standpoint, street and surface restoration costs are assessed at a rate of 50% of a standard street cost. And again, here, a standard street's defined as a 36-foot wide, 5-ton design with bituminous surfacing. Commercial properties are assessed for that full 50% of a full 10-ton street design. So if it's a little bit wider, heavier street, commercial properties are assessed for that full build compared to residential properties. And again, the city resumes that remaining 50%, any of that oversizing cost, the cost to go to concrete surface, streetscapes, and things of that nature. City also pays 100% of the cost related to storm sewer, any improvement to the alley, and any streetscapes. And streetscapes are, you know, trees and tree grates and colored and textured concrete and some of that, those items that were installed in the downtown area. So this is what it looks like, and I know this might be a little bit hard for everybody to see. I think Heidi will put these up on the city's website if anybody ever wants to look at it. There'll be a copy up there. So after you apply all this, we break these total costs down for streets and stormwater and sanitary sewer and water main and the like into either a city share or assessable share based on what I just described. And what that shakes out to is the city picking up about $4.6 million of that 6.5 million dollar project, and about 1.8 million is assessed to the adjacent properties. So it ends up being about a 72% city share and a 28% assessable share. Now, there's a bit of a unique circumstance with this project. The city allocated the use of some additional funds that became available to them through some of the ARPA funding that came down from the federal government related to COVID. So there's about another $470,000 that the city allocated towards this project. And that basically underwrote or offset the cost of the sanitary sewer and water main costs, not the service laterals, but the sewer main and that water main covered those costs. So this is that same table after you apply those additional funds, and you'll notice that the sanitary sewer, there's no assessable share for that, or underwater main, there's no assessable share for that. So that drops that assessable share of the project down to just over 20% or 1.3 million out of the $6.5 million is what was being assessed. So the next step is taking that 20% that's being assessed and spreading that out against those adjacent properties. And again, the assessment policy tells us how we do that project to project to try to keep it equitable and consistent, project to project. So basically, we take those costs and we divide them by assessable units, either frontage or each, to determine a rate. So in the case of sewer and water, which really isn't applicable in this case, because if you recall, it just said the city allocated additional funds that sort of made that a moot point, but typically, that would be assessed on a front footage basis. So the width of your lot, there's so many feet, we add up all that footage, divide the total costs out by the total footage to come up with a cost per foot. Service laterals, on the other hand, are assessed on an each basis. Street interior lots, the assessable footage is effectively the width of your lot. Assuming you have a fairly rectangular lot, your assessable footage is that width of the lot abutting the street. If you're a corner lot, your footage is either front footage or side lot footage. Could be both if we had improvement on both sides. Your front footage is considered your short side of your lot, so it's just the dimension of that short side of your lot that's abutting the improvement. For a side lot, it's 50% of the dimension of the longer side up to 150 feet, and then any footage over 150 feet. So the result of that is you can get about a 75-foot discount on your side lot or the long side of your property. So this is how all of this breaks down then. So for a residential street assessment, you're looking at just under $120 a foot. Commercial street assessment is about $132 a foot. Again, no assessment for sanitary sewer. Sanitary sewer services are about $2,500 each. No assessment for water main. And then a residential water service is about $3,600, and a commercial water service, which is a larger diameter water service, is $18,000. That got knocked down to about $12,000. A 100-foot lot would be, was going to be about $30,000, and now that's down to about $18,000. Commercial 100-foot lot was going to be about $33,000. That got pushed down to about $21,000. So terms and conditions, the special assessments will be levied against benefiting properties starting in property taxes for 2023. They'll go against property taxes on a 20-year term at a interest rate of 4.75%. You have the option to prepay all or a portion of those charges to either eliminate interest or reduce interest charges, just like any loan. There is, the city does have a deferral policy for certain properties. Qualifying properties can apply for a deferral. You can come into City Hall and see Heidi, and you fill out an application. The gist of it is you'd have to be 65 years of age or older, permanently disabled, and/or military personnel on active duty that meet the following criteria. You have to have the property in fee simple ownership, must be homesteaded, and you must meet certain income requirements. If you were to meet those criteria, the assessment could be deferred without interest until either sale, death of the owner, till the property becomes non-homesteaded, or there's no longer a financial hardship meeting those requirements. As I said, applications are available at City Hall. You have to fill out that application prior to November 15th every year, and there's a $10 application fee. That, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that has a question for our city engineer? Go ahead, Brian.
John, could you explain to us what the caps are on special assessments? You know, the state law, the limits, how much you can assess? Typically, how that relates to the market value, the market value increase on the land?
Yeah, so to paraphrase, because we're starting to wander into a bit of a legal world where I might have the city attorney chime in on this, but in general, there's a state statute that limits the city's ability to assess more than what the increased value of the property is. Does that make sense? The improvements, increased value of the property.
Property meaning?
The property that was, that's being assessed.
The lot?
Yes.
Without any building? No.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Charlie.
It's the entire value of the property. So we assess, you know, the benefit to the property has to exceed the, it has to increase the value of the property by at least the amount of the assessment, but we're not just limiting it to the land. It's whatever the market value of the property is.
Yep.
Which is different from what the state law is?
No, it's not different from what the state law is.
Okay, further questions for John? Otherwise, I'll open it up for comments.
Back there, Mayor.
Do you want to make a comment or do you have a question?
Well, I have a few questions.
Okay.
With the interest rate on this assessment for us, what does the city actually pay for interest? Because I contacted John, and he said that you pay a certain amount, and then we're assessed an additional 1% to 2% interest. Is that correct?
I'll let Heidi, Mayor, answer that.
Heidi, our financial officer, Heidi.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the PFA loan amount is the rate that we are using to calculate the interest rate that the folks on the assessment role are being charged. And the rate that we were being charged is 2.6%. Our assessment policy states that we always add 2% to whatever our borrowing costs are for carrying costs over those years. And so it's 2% onto that 2.6, rounded up to the nearest quarter percent. So that's how we got to the 4.75.
Okay. More questions?
Is that extra money in the city collecting? Where does that money go?
Everything that is collected goes to pay off the debt on this project. So as you saw in John's presentation, the cost of this project is well, well over what you folks are being assessed. And so any assessment proceeds, interest or otherwise, goes to pay back, you know, the cost of this project and the debt that the city owes on this project.
Further questions, ma'am?
The other question is the cement work that was done in front of Rossman. How bad it was, and was it ground? Is there an explanation to that?
John, do you want to field that?
Sure, if I understood you correctly, Annette, you're talking about the concrete paving from Rossman to Washington? Yeah, ultimately, we had that, what's called profiled or ground because we felt it was not, the ride was not there. So that's something we're working through with the contractor right now, but that ride quality wasn't there, and so that's why it was ground.
So is all the rocky rocks and gravel that's taken all, did that do the work? Or is there fracking and heating? Are we still charged for all of that?
Your assessment's unchanged with that, but as far as grinding concrete pavement, it's actually more commonly, it's a standard practice with concrete paving, particular on higher speed. We don't typically have to do it on low-speed residential stuff like inside the city here. The last two projects, we've not had to grind. But on, let's just say, interstate projects or things like that where you desire a much smoother ride at higher speed, it's actually standard practice to grind it. So it doesn't have any long-term detrimental effect to the overall longevity of the pavement.
So are we playing the quote over that cement before we come?
No.
Because I've never seen cement work done like that before with all the weep and jingle that they put in there, and it wasn't done properly. So that's why I feel it was ground out.
Yeah, I mean, I gave you my explanation of why it was ground down.
Any further questions or comments? Yes, sir. Again, if you would give us your name and address, please, for our minutes.
Lane Coons, 604 Willow Street, request. First, I'd like to say thank you for using ARPA funds to pay down part of the assessments. I appreciate that. But anyways, my assessment comes to just over $20,000. And I stopped into the city, and if I was to take the term, I would pay over $10,000 interest, just so you're aware. So that would bring it to just over $30,000. And if I was to, if you didn't use ARPA funds, that assessment would be up around $35,000, $36,000. $36,000. You put interest on that, that's about $50,000. That's about a third of the value of my property, just so you're aware of that. And just, I'm gonna basically drain my savings to pay this, just so I can avoid that interest. This is not what I wanted to use my savings for. But I'm gonna do it just to save $10,000, which is a large chunk of money. And with that, I would say I am not 100% happy with this project. I brought many things forward that I feel were done to my satisfaction. And we've had many conversations, and it just, I'm not happy the way things came out. And now, it's maybe not involved this, but now Midco is in there doing a lot of work that is wrecking a project that we're paying for. And I don't know, I've seen things go on that I don't know if it's gonna be addressed, but I've seen things happen that aren't right. And with all this, I think you, as a city, need to really look at your assessment policy. I don't think, see things getting cheaper. We can't, you can't, as a city, put these costs on the people. We can't afford it. It just, I don't see it going down, and you've said yourself in other meetings how costs are up, and you do not see them going down. I don't know the answer, but I think it needs to be looked at. There's something that needs to be done. And I, you know, I say I have that savings, and basically, it comes down to, in my personal life, it's come down to needs and wants. I've seen some things that get, that, yes, there is needs, and I think some things ever done were wants, and I think we need to really prioritize that. And there's, you know, within, I can look, I wrote down a list of, you know, things that have done in the past and things that are going forward. And there is, I see needs and some were wants. There's a lot of very expensive projects that are getting done within the past five years, or say, five years going forward. This is a short period of time to put a lot of money towards us as taxpayers. And that's just in city. You can throw on Becker County and the school district on top of that. There's a lot of money that's getting spent in a short time period here. So, you know, with all this happening, I honestly am looking to try and move out of the city. I don't like to say that. I do like the city, but I'm looking to move out of the city because of a lot of these things going on. So that's what I say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Evening. My name is Brian Langager, and I own a property, 1147 West Avenue. This is the third time that I've been involved in a special assessment. East Willow three years ago, West Avenue three years ago, and Willow this time around. So West, Willow, I was lucky enough to have a corner lot on West and Willow. I appreciate what the gentleman just had to say. It's a burden to be assessed numbers like this every few years. Three years ago, it was $10,000 on this little property, 700-square-foot home. Unfortunately, it's a bigger lot, 100 feet of frontage, 150 feet deep with a corner lot. So it's $15,000 this time around. So for a total of three years, it's $25,000. Can you imagine what it would have been without the special funding that you were able to dedicate to this property, or to this project? I too think that there has to be a better way of spreading the cost of special assessments to the rest of the community. You could be lucky enough to live on a street for 40 years and never, ever have to pay a special assessment. Or you could be like me, that just loses the lottery every three years and ends up paying $35,000, $40,000 in specials. The property that I have is a rental property. I can't charge enough money to offset the cost of special assessments, property taxes, utility costs, snow removal costs, and everything else that goes along with it. I can't, you know, you talk about affordable housing. I get $700 a month rent for this house, and I'm barely breaking even on it after I start paying for all of these special assessments. I did spend a little time reviewing the state law, and I must have found the wrong article, but the state law says that the increase in market value, the special benefit that you receive by having this project completed cannot exceed the market value increase for the land of the property, not including buildings, but it's for the land only. So I disagree with, respectfully disagree with what's been presented, but I have a copy of the interpretation of the state law, and so.
So if you want to leave that with us, Brian, take a look at it.
I will do that. I will do that. So I'm going to file an objection based on that information, that I believe that the income of my special assessments that I'm being charged at $15,099 far exceeds what the market value is for the land of this property. Currently, the land has a market value of about $30,000, and with a special assessment of $15,000 on top of that, that would make the property, the land worth, have to be worth $45,000, and we know that's not, that's not, that's not true. No lot over there in that part of the city with 100 feet of frontage that's worth $45,000. We can check with some realtors, and maybe they could offer some insight or any in the room, but. So I'll drop off that, too, my formal objection, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brian. Any further comments at this time?
My name is Karen Liring, and I own a piece of property on 1155 Willow. My daughter lives there. We bought that property so that she could have affordable housing. And she pays for, she reimburses us for the cost of the property insurance and the taxes, and she works full-time, and she hustles to get jobs, to earn extra money. And this is gonna cost her an extra $100 a month that she doesn't have. And so she lives on the corner of Campbell and Willow, and you guys are talking about doing Campbell next, and if you charge her that same amount, you're gonna tax her right out of her house. So I do strongly, as the southern gentleman said, consider how you're taxing people and your policy on how you're doing that, because you're gonna make her have to move out of that house. And I just don't want to see that happen. Please consider that.
Thank you. Further comments? If not, that public hearing is closed. Oh, I'm sorry, Dwayne, go ahead.
My name is Dwayne O'Neil, I live at 421 Willow Street, 1942. My question is the traffic. I don't know how many of you know I live right next to the school. And on 102822, from 7:30 till 8:30 a.m., 451 cars went past, 146 pickups, and 18 buses and trucks. That's 625 units. They use that street much more than I do. Why do I pay for all of it? Anybody got an answer?
Well, we'll listen to your comments, Dwayne, but we're not here to be interrogated.
You know, and I also wonder, what is the charge, cement versus asphalt? How much more did this street cost us with that? No answer?
I don't know if I could recite that from the beginning of the project, but I would suspect that it was probably an increase of around 30 or 40 percent.
And what took the project so long? Started in April. I was told that tomorrow they're gonna do another grinding or painting on the street. That's eight months. Why so long? What's going on? And I just, you know, some of those things like everybody else says, the cost of addressing this to the homeowners directly is not proper. It should be assessed over the whole city, so we get to pay for some of their streets, and they get to pay for some of ours. It just isn't, isn't right. Traffic that's on my street, for what I use it for? It isn't worth it. Just isn't worth it. It's too much.
Thank you. Last call for comments. All right, that public hearing now is closed. What are your wishes, Council?
Public Works reviewed this with John, and we moved to adopt the assessment role for Willow Street, Home Street, and Frazee Street improvements for the year 2022.
Is there a second motion? Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution, adopting the assessment role for Willow Street, Home Street, and Frazee Street improvements for the year 2022. Discussion by the Council.
Question.
Jamie?
How long do people have to file their objections?
Further questions or comments from the Council? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I'll call to order a public hearing to consider the proposed assessments for unpaid service charges for 2021 and 2022. Marshaun?
Mayor and Council, this is for some unpaid services. We had eight of them this year. Six of them were lots that are yards that were not in mode, that we had to send our city contractor into mall. One was a tree, a dangerous tree, and another one was for a pond restoration on East Shore Drive.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to the issue of the assessment role for unpaid service charges? Darren, name and address, please, for the record.
Darren Halverson, I live at 1728 East Shore Drive. I'm being charged for special assessment property that's not.
Okay, we got your letter. Is that the extent of your comment?
Well, I don't know how you can charge a special assessment on a property that's not intended to fit into any one of my properties.
Well, Kelsey, do you want to explain what the actual service charge is for? Apparently, you know, it's not, we're not charging our property.
Right, maybe I'll let Charlie tackle that question.
Yeah, this service charge, first of all, it's a service charge assessment, so it's not a benefit assessment, so there's no special benefit that needs to be shown. So even if this were something that would have been like Sean was talking about, the tree cutting or that kind of thing, we don't need to, in order to assess the cost for that service, the city doesn't have to show a special benefit to the property in doing it. So to the extent that Mr. Halverson is referencing a benefit assessment, he is thinking of the wrong kind of assessment. So for instance, the projects that we just, where Mr. Langager got up and talked about that, yes, the city does need to show a special benefit to that type of assessment, but for this one, not. These are just service charge assessments. This all stems from a violation by Mr. Halverson of the city's illicit discharge ordinance. My understanding is Mr. Halverson has the adjoining property. He hired a contractor to go in and do some work on his property. That contractor utilized the city's property without permission, caused some damage to the city's property. That city property happens to be a stormwater holding basin. We are governed as an MS4 city, required to have an illicit discharge ordinance, and the illicit discharge ordinance specifically, Darren, is 1008.12, actually, it's 1008. And the cost of enforcement or abatement of a violation can be assessed against the adjoining property, which was the reason for the violation. In this situation, Mr. Halverson's adjoining property was the reason for the violation because the, Mr. Halverson and his contractor used the city's property without permission to go do that, and they damaged the holding basin. It is true that the city also had a contractor working in there subsequent to that. I think Kelsey can go through the numbers, but the Council should be aware that Mr. Halverson is not being charged for the entire cost of the work that was done to correct it, but only a proportion of it based upon the damage that his contractor caused. The city has some other alternatives as far as this. It is a, Mr. Halverson would be prosecuted criminally for this. The city has not chosen that alternative yet. It also would say that the city has the right to deem it a public nuisance. In this situation, what we're doing is we're enforcing the terms of the city's illicit discharge ordinance and assessing the cost for the work that was done on Mr. Halverson's property by his contractor that damaged the city's property, which violated the illicit discharge ordinance to Mr. Halverson's property.
I didn't request any service to any of my properties, though. And then, one thing, too, the city did have contractors in there with far bigger equipment. We're talking like the late Dave and Gliot size. So to say that my guy's damaged the ring dyke is far disting from the truth.
Okay. Anything further from city staff?
Mayor and Council, we did review this at Public Works and reviewed the pictures, and if the Council still wishes to see the photos, we can put them up, too, so.
All right. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak to the issue of the unpaid, assessment for unpaid service charges? Hearing none, that public hearing is closed. What are your wishes?
Public Works reviewed this, along with reviewing the pictures from Mr. Halverson's property and what happened around our stormwater basin. We also reviewed the invoice and the pricing on making that correction, and we moved to adopt that assessment role for unpaid service charges.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the assessment role for unpaid service charges for 2021 and 2022. Discussion by the Council. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this time, I'll call to order a public hearing to consider the proposed assessments for Long Pine Estates Phase 3 improvements for the year 2022.
Mayor and Council, this will be similar to the other hearing that just, we just went through, but should be significantly shorter. This is a assessment hearing for the proposed special assessments related to the Long Pine Estates Third Edition. Again, it's a requirement of State Statute 429. I'll go over some of the project background, final project costs, and special assessment terms. The developer, which would be Nugget Investments in this case, petitioned the city, or requested the city, make street utility improvements to what would be the third and final phase of about a 60-lot subdivision out near Long Lake. This particular third phase contained about 27 lots, and there were about five adjacent future lots that were outside the subdivision that would ultimately benefit from some of the improvements that were made. Construction was substantially completed late this summer. From a sewer and water standpoint, effectively, we just extended existing sewer and water mains from some of the adjacent phases of the project, 8-inch PVC sewer mains, 4-inch service laterals, there was no lift station, 6-inch water mains, hydrants, valves, water service laterals, and tied them into the adjacent existing system. So nothing real fancy or special here, a little bit of an illustration of what was done with the project, the green being the sewer, the blue being the water main. Stormwater and streets, we also extended storm sewer along the new streets that we built. Treatment and rate control were in line with Pelican River watershed district requirements, as well as city stormwater requirements. For the most part, that was provided by treatment basins that were built with previous phases of the subdivision. New streets were built to typical city standards that we do in subdivisions like this, which is about a 36-foot-wide urban section street with curb and gutter. Again, a little bit of an illustration of what was done, two different. Again, a little bit of an illustration of what was done, two different areas with this phase. Project costs in total, project cost was about $1 million, just a shade over $1.5 million. That does not include just a little over $40,000 of previously deferred special assessments that were incorporated into the assessment role for this project. So we recovered some of those costs that we had previously deferred from prior Long Lake projects. Be funded by city costs and special assessments in accordance with the city's special assessment policy. The way it breaks down for a project of this nature is 100% of the cost from sewer, water main, service laterals, and the street. Sorry, 100% of the, the costs were assessed for those items. The only participation the city has in this is 50% of the stormwater costs. So you put that into a table, this is what it looks like. The city's picking up just under $100,000 for that 50% of the stormwater cost. The balance was just shy of $1.5 million, is being assessed. The developer is required to prepay about $315,000. He was required to pay that before we awarded the construction project and has done so. And then of that assessable share, I mentioned that there were about, there were five lots on some adjacent property that were not a part of the subdivision, but could ultimately benefit from the improvements. So there's about $225,000 of assessable costs that we will defer until that property is developed. So we distribute those assessable costs to the adjacent property, again, in accordance with the city's special assessment policy. We divide the costs by assessable units to determine a rate. In these cases, we typically do a per-lot allocation, so we take the assessable cost divided by the number of lots, come up with a cost per lot. What that shakes out to is, is on the screen here, about $20,000 for street costs, $3,000 for stormwater, $9,700 bucks for sanitary sewer, $3,000 for sewer service lateral, about $6,600 bucks for water main, and $2,600 for a water service. So before you account for any deferred assessments, it would be on top of this from previous improvements or prepayments, you're looking at about $45,000 per lot for the street sewer and water improvements. And again, there was previously deferred assessments that were incorporated into this assessment role, and then we've got some other deferrals in a second role that would be deferred until that property is developed. So the developer prepaid a 25% of the assessable share prior to construction. The remaining balance, plus that previously deferred assessment, are assessed for 15 years following a five-year deferral. That's an option that is provided for in the assessment policy, so he'll get a five-year deferral, and then followed by a 15-year term at an interest rate of 6%.
Any questions for John regarding the proposed assessments for Long Pine Estates Phase Three? Hearing none, that public hearing is closed, and I would entertain a motion.
Public Works Committee reviewed and moves to adopt the assessment role for Long Pine Estates Phase Three improvements for the year 2022.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the assessment role for Long Pine Estates Phase Three improvements for the year 2022. Discussion by the counsel.
I just have one comment. Kind of wrapped this comment in with the last comment, or last, last public hearing about Willow, Holmes, Fraser. As you can see, prices are going up, prices are changing, and this is brand-new development that's $45,000. It's, it's starting to get a little bit challenging to either do a development or reconstruct project, and people out here are asking for something to change. And I think maybe it is, I know we had some conversation about it at our budget meetings, and I think it's something that we really need to look into, into the future, because like everybody is saying, the same, same thing isn't gonna, gonna keep working here. So as we evolve into the, into things here in the city, I think we should look at it. And if we have to spread it across the, the entire city, you know, that's something we're gonna have to look at. For new development, you know, it can't be, you know, one-to-one, but definitely needs to be, be something here that we need to look at and look serious at, because it's a challenge.
Further comments? Aaron?
I get a lot of comments regarding these park dedication fees on these new developments. Maybe instead of charging a park dedication fee, we can set up on, aside for these developments on something like this.
Further comments? Hearing none, no further comments. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. And that brings us to the Community Development Committee agenda, and I'll turn it over to Chairman Josephson.
Item A is about ordinance 499, rezoning of a couple of addresses, 1435 and 1392 East Shore Drive, from R2 to LB Lakefront Business. Larry, you want to give us some information?
Yes, this is a request from Eventide Detroit Lakes. They would like this property, this 11-acre piece of property rezoned from R2 to LB Lakefront Business District. That's part of their request for a conditional use permit for a 119-unit senior assisted living facility. So basically, they would have 75 independent living units, 24 assisted living units, and 20 memory care units. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this. They felt that this was a good buffer between the Highway 10 and the residential area on East Shore Drive.
Okay. With that, I think before we make any motions or anything, we'll open it up for any comments from the public. And again, if you would come to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
My name's Larry Widerfeld. I own property to the east of the coast site for Eventide, it's 1500 and 1510 by Highway 10 East. I have about 300 feet of my property runs around theirs. I believe the person has a right to do what he wants of his own property, but this is not a neighborhood that can request to build a larger house than what's allowed in R2 District. This is a company that's trying to build high-density planned unit development in the middle of a low-density residential area. I used to live on the city beach, I used to own Ferry Land Cottage. Over there, we expected noise, congestion, trespassers, drunks, lack of privacy. We had the city beach in front of us with a boat landing. Zorgus is lived on the east side, city park and fairgrounds behind us, and public bathrooms around the west side of us. Anything that could be built there, and we do it, is an LB District. That's what it was zoned for, and that was the expected. I now live in the middle of an R2 zoned residential area. I have 3.7 acres in between two nice 10-acre wooded lots. I was going to get built on someday and fully expected a bunch of new neighbors with brand-new shiny homes. I think that was reasonable expectation for the area that I live in, that's what it's zoned for. What is not reasonable is that the neighboring property would ever even be considered to rezone to a high-density lakefront business district that's not even on the lake. Or that a conditional use permit for a planned unit development with over 250 residents plus employees, visitors, and delivery trucks would even be considered right next door to me. On one side, I'll have a parking lot running along 160 feet of my property. On the other side of my 180 feet of the property, I would have a three, no, now it's a four-story building with an outdoor rooftop patio overlooking my property. My wife and I have lived in DL for well over 25 years. We've lived at this location for over six years. This is our home. We're trying to build a new retirement home in the corner of this lot. If I never thought there was any chance that this was ever to be zoned, I never would invest in my time or my money into the property. There's not a single neighbor that orders this development that wants to live next to Eventide. Whether they were at the Planning Commission meeting or here tonight, they're allowing them against it. There are about 20 properties that border this proposal. This project is detrimental to all of our properties. This project does nothing to protect the natural setting of the area, which should be considered, or they're going to clear cut over 10 acres of trees. This project does not reinforce the character of the individual neighborhood, but instead is an intrusion of incompatible land use into a residential area. This does not promote the health, the safety, or the general welfare of the neighborhood. There are problems with the parking and access to the facility, which will cause congestion and safety issues now and well into the future. I doubt that the fireside could be built for this neighborhood today, but back when there was only little seasonal cabins, a few houses, a small resort down the way, nobody in the neighborhood cared after all the fireside was all gone, be open seasonally. No, at the time, no, at the time, the anticipated resort would be replaced with a lodge, cabins would be replaced by some rather large homes, and that the fireside would expand twice and now be open year-round. Apparently, the employees have to park in the street to provide for their customers. When they do, they cause a problem with traffic, because there are no sidewalks. There are only two bike lanes that must share with pedestrians, with the walkers, with the joggers, with bicyclists, and the parking. This causes a clear safety issue, especially in the summer when all the tourists are here and the traffic around the lake is busiest. These city tridents connect to the regional ones in and around the city. They're an intricate part of Detroit Lakes, and they contribute to that small-town feel that makes us special. Now, you want to funnel over 250 people in that small area via three entrances, you should not even be considered without an entrance off of Highway 10, which they could have easily done if they had wanted to. It was offered to them. Now, Eventide would likely believe that other people barely drive, that they would never leave the grounds for anything. This is simply ridiculous. They're building 75 independent one, two, and three-bedroom units for people that are 62 and up, and my wife and I are 64 years old. She drives somewhere at least four to five times a day. Currently, the staff report calls for one parking space per resident. It's one for each staff person on maximum shift. Eventide is proposing 155 spaces for 119 units and 30 to 40 staff. I do not believe the state's going to count the fact that 15 of their units are two-bedroom and 11 are three-bedroom, which would require more parking. Also, there will be visitors, especially at the 50-foot lake line. You never know how many friends you have at Ferry Run Cottage at the beach. Also, another parking concern for me is the fact that Larry Run said that Eventide is going to share their parking with Fireside, which acknowledges that they have a parking problem, but this is not solving. Now, you'll have two places that won't have enough parking, and I believe that'll only get worse with time. Eventide acknowledges that this is already a busy and noisy traffic section of East Shore Drive, urban landscaping plan, which is why they are providing a traffic barrier between East Shore Drive and their buildings. I find it interesting that there are no other measures being taken so that they know disturbance to their neighbors. There's nothing to prevent noise or block lighting or trespass, particularly on the east end of the property, which by the way, is where they're putting up the three and now four-story buildings along with a rooftop outdoor patio and a bulk of their own parking. This project will have a negative impact on property values for my neighbors and myself now and well into the future. The area around Eventide Lake is zoned R2, with the exception of only six lakefront zone businesses, and they have all been here for well over 25 years. The only LB zone larger than this one would be the entire city beach. These LB zones are lake businesses and tourist areas. They're meant for shopping, eating, and lake activities, belonging to residential and upper stories. That is what an LB District is meant for. A senior living development does not fit that description. Also, you should note that the fireside, Long Bridge, Bowling Alley, Edgewater, Holiday Inn, Lodge, which was formerly resort cabins, and the city beach area are all actually lakefront businesses. They're tourist-oriented, and they're open to the public. A lakeside business district should not be created just for this business. As far as I understand it, one requirement to be zoned a lakefront business is to have a 100-foot wide lot. I'd assume that means on the lake. Eventide is 50 feet, and the other 10 acres is on the other side along with their non-lake business. I used to own three and a half acres of 1048 West Lake Drive. I had 50 feet of lake shore over there. I sold that property in 03 to a gentleman that was gonna develop it, and he wanted to build 20, 30 units and give everybody lake access. Shortly after his purchase, there's a freeze put in place. It lasted about 12 months, and then was extended for another six months. That was to evaluate what could be built on and around the lake and how to best use it and protect the lake. Pretty sure they were thinking there's too many people getting on the lake, and that didn't directly run the lake shore. In the end, he was allowed to build six minutes on three and a half acres of land. Took 17 years and finally built a house. I think they just finished the last one here the last year. So let's say if I wanted to build 75 high-end apartments and then use that 50 feet of lake shore, pretty sure the answer would be no. And that's exactly what Eventide is trying to do under the guise of a senior living development. Remember, out of the 119 units that they want to build, 75 are independent, one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. Only 24 of their units are assisted living and 20 are memory care. Let's talk about market need for a minute. While I do agree there may be a market need for senior housing and care, I do not believe that Eventide project is the answer. The national average for assisted living is $3,500 per month. The Minnesota average is $3,403 per month. Detroit Lakes average is $3,028 per month. Eventide Morit gets $4,766 for assisted care. That's $1738 more than we did in DL for the same care. Eventide independent units in order at the Linden, which of course are less than assisted living, because they're basically apartments. A one-bedroom charges over $2,700 to $2,800 per month. A one-bedroom with a patio is over $3,000. A two-bedroom is over $3,650. A two-bedroom with a patio is almost $4,000. They have no three-bedroom units compared to it. A two-bedroom den and patio is $4,764. That's $57,168 a year. Here's what household makes in Detroit Lakes. 44.9% will make under $35,000 per year. 40% make $35,000 to $99,000. That's almost 85% of the people in Detroit Lakes. The median income is only $59,315. Eventide is not for the majority of Detroit Lakes residents, and clearly does not meet the needs of the senior housing in this area. Speaking of housing, I want you to believe that a significant number of local residents will sell their homes, move this development, creating starter homes for other people. But the fact is, the majority of people in DL can't afford to live at Eventide. So the majority of people that move here are not from DL, which creates no new homes for the area. If you want the lucky ones from DL, you can afford to move to Eventide, but you don't live in a starter home, do you? So this creates no new starter homes for the city. Jobs, they claim to plan that they're gonna create 30 to 40 full-time equivalents. 30 to 40 full-time equivalents, which means five to 10 jobs that are full-time and 60 to 90 part-time jobs. But in fact, they're not creating any jobs. They're crowding a larger shortage of workers where they're needed most in the current affordable senior housing sector. There are currently 22 assisted living facilities that service DL. 12 are in DL, and 10 are in nearby areas, Fraser, Perd, et cetera. Those have to be the home healthcare people, respite people, which my daughter uses, the hospitals, all of them are short-handed, and I don't expect it to get any better. A quick check online, you will find that there are over a dozen places in DL hiring PCAs, HHAs, CNAs, that's not even counting surrounding areas. The average pay is $15 to $17 per hour. I'm sure Eventide can pay more and will, creating a bigger problem. I know of families now that cannot find respite. I know one assisted living in town that can't get their meds, their clients on time because they don't have the staff. They do not have to, they do not need to have further shortages. Look at this way. Suppose Fargo paid a lot more for essential workers, like police, fire, ambulance. If 30 to 40 of our people left, where would the city be? There's in fact a shortage for every single position that they need to fill, except administration. Seems you can always find somebody there.
So Larry, there's other people that want to speak? Are you getting?
I understand, I'm just, I'm almost.
All right, thank you.
Very sorry. Thank you. I just want to address their taxes. By Eventide's own admission, they'll pay taxes equivalent to similar multifamily apartments. I believe one or two families owns that this is, as this is zoned for, will provide that same revenue. It will keep the integrity of the neighborhood and not set the precedent for more high-density development. Remember, I have 3.7 acres adjoining this development. Charlie Ramstead has 10 or so adjoining mine. If this is allowed, everything from Eventide to Oxcart Rowan will surely be rezoned to high density someday. I think common sense shows that there's no. I think common sense shows there is no need for this project in this neighborhood. They're good and should be built elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments?
My name is Navis Fleming and I live at 1391 East Shore Drive, immediately north of the proposed Eventide development property. I bought my house last year and thought my neighborhood would continue to be zoned residential. In fact, I declined to make an offer on how elsewhere Detroit Lakes, because its backyard abutted a commercial area. If a property in a zone which is designated residential can be changed to a business zone, it makes a residential designation meaningless. Buying a home is a major financial decision for most people. The agent who represented me was conscientious about pointing out the characteristics of the neighborhood in which a home for sale was located. One of the planning commission members stated that the city's comprehensive plan allows for the rezoning as requested. This piece of information was never presented to me. Because it is allowed doesn't mean approval should be given. I oppose this change. I'm also concerned about the development proposal for the non-conforming lake lot directly across the street from me. My house was built with a front porch in order to take advantage of a lake view. Photos of the lake view were included in the real estate listing and I was informed that the lot was too small as a home building site per ordinance. Eventide's proposal for a clubhouse or pavilion and four parking spaces on the lot significantly alters the lot's environment. It blocks the view of the lake for myself and neighborhood pedestrians. It would diminish my quality of life and enjoyment of my home. If Eventide's proposal moves forward, the lake lot can be used without a clubhouse or pavilion and parking spaces. The integrity of the lake lot can be maintained in a park-like setting with benches and other seating. A clubhouse or pavilion with parking is an amenity and not a necessity for a senior living complex. This is a non-conforming lot in the Shoreland District. The city ordinance for building a structure on a non-conforming lake lot states that the impervious surface coverage does not exceed 25% of the lot. Becker County zoning ordinances and Minnesota DNR regulations state the same. I'd like to point out that item 18 of the conditional use permit is a variance from this as it allows a 35% impervious surface coverage. I attended the planning commission meeting on October 27th and it is unclear to me and possibly others if all criteria for granting a variance exceeding the impervious surface requirement have been met. Finally, I have concerns about substantial increase in traffic, including large delivery trucks. The delivery trucks, which likely include semis, will enter and leave the property just yards away from my house. East Shore Drive is popular with walkers, dog walkers, bicyclists, and runners. In fact, the Dick Beardsley race used East Shore Drive. Such activities will be negatively impacted by the development. And for all these reasons, I ask that you not approve this request to rezone the property. Eventide wants to promote my neighborhood as a desirable location to prospective residents. But by this development's very presence, it would significantly change the neighborhood's environment for those of us who already live here. My hope is that you seriously consider the views of my neighbors and me when making your decision. I'm a little guy, objecting to the plan, but big guy, does my objection carry any weight?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and the council? I guess I've.
Could I get your name, sir?
I'm not going to go into the details.
Could I get your name and address, please, for the record?
Excuse me, Rod Wilhelm, 1404 East Shore Drive. And like I said, I'm not going to go into all the details, I agree with the last two people, but I'm going to add a couple points. And first of all, we've owned property in Detroit Lakes for the last 40 years on numerous lakes. I, we actually own Lake Home on Floyd and this property on Detroit Lake. What I'm concerned about is the lot next to the 1404 is proposed to be the parking in the boat ramp area. That's a major concern. And obviously, the rezoning, I would decrease our value of our property and the image of our property. I mean, like I said, I agree with the last two people wholeheartedly. And the big issue would be the safety, all the extra traffic. It'd decrease value. And we pay a lot of taxes. In fact, I would think the people around Detroit Lake probably pay most, the majority of the taxes in this area. And I would think they would all be concerned. And I would think this Eventide could find a better location instead of being right on our neighborhood, right there, right across the street from our own. I'm just not happy with it at all. So I would be against rezoning.
Okay, thank you. Mark?
Yeah, hi, Mark Fritz, 1492 East Shore Drive. I've lived on East Shore for close to 50 years. Back when it was just a little road, we could play tennis in the street. And stuff, there weren't many cars coming by. I'm against the rezoning. My wife and I are, business partner Mike, I think he sent you guys a letter today as well. You know, and I'm against it, you know, really because it is zoned. People move like these folks, they move to that neighborhood because it is zoned, single-family. And I didn't count, I didn't realize there was 119 units because I would have, I would have driven up and down the shore and covered. That probably doubles the size of that neighborhood, just this one development. Doubles the traffic, doubles everything else. I am pro DL, I'm pro investment and development. We want investment dollars coming in. I just don't believe this is the right location. There are other locations. I did send something to John today, he's probably mad that I did it today, it's a couple of weeks ago. But we do have another parcel under contract, my partner and I, that we think, at Fincelson Farm. Great views of the lake, beautiful, 50 acres, not a lot of neighbors right around there. And if that's available, you know, we'd let that go tomorrow. The only reason we got it, really, well, we don't know why we got it, but we wanted to put a path to Detroit Mountain, just continue the traffic along from the Heartland Trail out. And Larry could do a nice job putting under grant proposal together for the folks of the Legacy. But we were scratching our heads what to do with that property. But that, maybe would be a great location. So there are other locations. It's not this where they leave. It would be a lot less money, great views, and it wouldn't mess up that neighborhood that we've called home for 50, almost 50 years. So I urge you guys to vote no, and thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Further comments? Brent?
Brent Alderson, 1354 East Shore Drive. I'm obviously against this. I'm a carpenter in town, I love growth of the town. I'll build anyone a house here. But this is not the location that I'd like to see, 119 units. And then, if you, if we're really talking about saving this green earth and planet and the lake, the 30% that I can cover on my house should be their 30% too. The 35% impervious coverage on commercial property is crazy in my eye. And if you guys want to change that, I would love to add on to my house. So I'd approve, I hope you guys don't go with this idea. Greg Mark, there's other locations not to put this by, single-family homes.
Okay, thank you. Further comments? Alright, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I just want to be quick. So I'm Scott Black, developer for Eventide. And I've heard a lot of the comments, some of them I disagree with and I'll show them some of the math or the research or the rates all come from. But I can clear that up some other time. But I think for now, what I want to do, first of all, just thank you. And thank especially Larry and Kelsey for walking us through, even getting an application together. Every city's got its nuances. This city has plenty and they did a great job. I want to commend them and want to thank you guys for considering that proposal. We've tried over the last six, eight months to get as much input as we can. So we didn't get here and it was a surprise to everybody. We tried to talk to Pelican River, we talked with Becker County, we had a neighborhood meeting in June, and tried to take all the input that we heard and apply that to the site plan, along with trying to stay within the side of all the ordinances that there are. And it is a complicated process, so I think that we've accomplished that. And, you know, it is a unique opportunity. And what we're trying to do here is bring a state-of-the-art senior campus to DL and serve the surrounding communities. What you have here with Eventide is a tremendous nonprofit organization that's been serving, you know, seniors in Fargo and Morehead, all over the state, and doing a really good job. And I think you've got a tremendous opportunity to bring a great provider here. I know it's a little bit controversial, but I think we'll be a great neighbor to them. So that was it, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion from Chairman Josephson and then I'll probably restrict any further discussion to just the council. So, Dan?
Alright. Item eight for this is consideration for the first reading of ordinance 499, rezoning from R2 to LB lakefront business at 1435 and 1392 East Shore Drive, Eventide Detroit Lakes LLC. Planning commission reviewed this, so a couple of weeks ago, CDC reviewed this, passed the planning commission, and it passed the CDC this morning. So with that being said, I would move for approval of the rezoning from R2 to LB lakefront district.
Second. Motion's been made to second to give first reading to ordinance 499, rezoning from R2 to LB at 1435 and 1392 East Shore Drive. Discussion from the council. Go ahead, Ron.
I've lived in Detroit Lakes for over 53 years. And for 51 of these years, I've lived at 304 Sunset Avenue, right off Richard Road on the north side of town. My neighborhood has been very important to me and to my family, much like how much important your home and your neighborhood is to you. For the majority of the homes here in Detroit Lakes, we all have a zoning called R2. Same as Sunset Edition, R2. Most single-family homes, with a few, maybe some duplexes or a fourplex, or now they call them a townhouse. I even recommended at one time an R1 zoning for North Broadway to the city council. And by golly, they gave it to me. That means homes only, no houses, no fourplexes, no duplexes. I thought, fantastic, we've got R1 zoning in Detroit Lakes. But to my surprise, that lasted less than six months. They said that we can't allow that and they switched it back to R2. I started to see apartments popping up all over the north side of Detroit Lakes with all kinds of variances and conditional use permits, right up next to existing home zone R2. It got to be that people said, you don't want to buy a house if it's got an empty spot next to it because you won't have your neighborhood. That's how bad it was. That's why I ran for city council, and I've been on the council for 18 years. I wanted to make some changes for people that are living in the existing family neighborhood so this wouldn't happen to them. We didn't want large apartment complexes moving right up to residential houses. I feel now more than ever that it is time for the city council to stand up for homeowners in their neighborhoods in all of Detroit Lakes. Not just on East Shore, not just on the north side, but every place. For most families, their homes are the biggest asset that they own. Now let's look at the matter of Eventide wanting to move into East Shore Drive with a project that will take up 11.45 acres and a building of 119 units. For most of us, when we hear the word Eventide, all my friends think, why am I against a nursing home? Because you think that long-term care is going to happen. Somebody that's paralyzed or has a stroke that needs 24-hour care around the clock, we're going to have a new facility for that. This is not what this facility is. I looked at this proposal and I see that the majority of this project is for high-end apartments. They call it senior housing, not nursing home care. Now I want you to think a little bit about what we have here. This complex, like Mr. Rennerfeld said, will have 75 luxury apartments, or 63% of this project will be one, two, and three-bedroom apartments with 777 square feet up to 1,426 square feet. And then the next complex will include 24 assisted living with one- and two-bedroom apartments from 664 square feet to 10,012 square feet. That's 20% of the project. And then we'll have, the next complex will be 20 units for memory care with sizes 349 square feet to 554 square feet, or 17% of the project. Now I want to have you think a little bit about what some of these amenities are going to be. That we're going to have a dining room with daily meals available, served restaurant style. A bistro with grab-and-go options, beverages and continental breakfasts. A club lounge, rooftop patio on a four-story building. Movie theater, multi-purpose community room. This project is much like Touchmark Complex in South Fargo, which is also a high-end living for seniors. This project also includes 50 feet of lakeshore. Now, when you look at all these things that are going to happen here, you see that's quite a bit. This is a good project, but this is the wrong place for it. It needs to be off where it isn't going to hurt existing property owners. And that's what this project does. It hurts existing residential neighborhoods that are zoned R2 for family homes, not community business properties. Please tell me that this Eventide complex is going to improve the lives of homeowners who will be living across the street from this project and alongside the project on Highway 10 and across the road on Lakeside. The homeowners on East Shore Drive want peace and quiet after they come home from work each day. When you start changing the environment in an existing neighborhood and you start changing people's lives, you end up with problems. What kind of changes are we going to be seeing for these neighborhoods? Well, first of all, let's start with the existing removal of existing trees, of the existing trees on the 11.45 acres. Let's talk about the light pollution at night. Let's talk about employee and residential parking. And don't forget visitor parking also that needs to come along with it. And let's talk about that four-story building. Remember when Bob Spillman wanted to build his property up on Randolph Road off of Highland Drive? He wanted a three-story and we told him he was crazy? Well, now we want four stories. We already have an overflow parking problem in that street with the fireside employees up and down the street at all hours of the day. With, and with this large complex coming in, the parking is going to become even worse for us. For many years, East Shore Drive, as well as the entire Detroit Lakes, on both Big and Little Detroit Drive, Detroit Lakes Drive has been a fantastic and favorite spot for people to do walking, to do biking, and sightseeing by both local residents and our many visitors that come to our city. For most of people who live on East Shore Drive, this neighborhood matters to them. Some have lived here as many as 60 years plus. Why should the neighbors have to sacrifice their neighborhood for a commercial business? These homeowners are concerned about the value of their homes when this is all said and done. At the planning commission meeting last week, there was a lady that said that she flew in from Pennsylvania for the planning meeting just because she had bought a home up close to where this project's going to be built because she was assured that with R2, she'd never imagined that something like this would happen. Needless to say, she is more than being disappointed. The homeowners on East Shore Drive don't want to have a lakefront business known as Eventide to be built at the expense of the values of their neighborhood. At what cost do these neighbors have to accept to have this project put in their area? This isn't a win-win deal for the homeowners on East Shore Drive or it's not a win-win deal on any. deal on any area of town when big businesses come in on neighborhoods. A one-win deal is when everyone is happy. The only happy people on this project is going to be the builder, Eventide. When you change the atmosphere and environment of existing neighborhoods, it is time to say no for this project. We need to stand up as a council for homeowners in all Detroit Lakes, as well as the East Shore, but everywhere in Detroit Lakes, homes are special and we have to let that out to the people because right now, people are afraid to build in our town because they don't know what's going to be next to them. That is not right. I'm hoping that we can make something to come out of this good. I hope that Eventide will find another spot and not forget Detroit Lakes, but we need to remember neighborhoods are strong in Detroit Lakes. And I hope that the council will vote no on this tonight so we can keep the neighborhoods a neighborhood. Thank you.
Further comments?
Well, sure, I've got one or a couple, Your Honor.
Okay, Dan.
Want to go first, Wendy?
I guess my only comment was, when I've been reviewing this in the past few days, well, about a week, it just continues to come to me that we need to honor our own zoning. We have a residential zoning, it's clearly residential, 90% around the lake, I don't do percentages, but clearly it's a residential area and I think we need to honor that. I think it's an amazing idea and a great concept, but does it belong in the middle of someone's neighborhood where they're raising their families and those kinds of things? So that is really where I tend to kind of pull back a little bit from this. The lake shore, the 50 feet on the lake, when you can't, no one's allowed to build anything and yet we're going to possibly have a variance, I mean, it's being proposed that we have a variance to allow something like that, that doesn't make sense again to the nature of the neighborhood and the residential area. The primary construction is not on the lake and yet we're asking for a zoning of lake shore business. It doesn't make sense to me. I would rather we remain a residential zoning in that particular piece of property.
Okay, Dan?
Well, a couple of things. I mean, you know, I think it's important to note that this is senior living, whether it's assisted, independent, or in memory care. So I think that's an important point to bring into this whole discussion. It's not just, you know, apartments, okay? And the people that live there are going to, you know, certainly drive less, certainly the people in the memory care unit aren't going to be going anywhere, I hope. I mean, the other thing I want to mention is that, you know, there's been a lot of talk about property values, but I, you know, I do have a assisted living facility, you know, pretty much in my neighborhood there, Pelican Landing. And I tell you, there's, I have never, in the years it's been there, must be five years now, noticed any additional traffic. And certainly, if the county assessor is to be believed, my property values have risen. If not because of that, it certainly hasn't hurt them, okay? I mean, they've gone nowhere but up. So, you know, I think that what the, you know, the idea with the Planning Commission too was that, you know, it was a split vote, five to three, but it did pass and it passed because senior living fits in this area. If you look at Eventide's designs, they've made a lot of effort to fit in the area. I think they probably will have to cut a lot of trees, but they're landscaping, and I would say that, you know, we need to, you know, be diligent about following that. It's going to make that area look wonderful, and I think they're going to do a good job there. So, you know, the only other, last thing I would just say, Your Honor, is, or I got two things because it's technically, Larry, they're not asking for a variance because it's get zone lakefront business, that's a conditional use, right?
It's a conditional use permit and you can put conditions here.
Yeah, but the 35% or 30% impervious surface fits in that zone without a variance.
That is a permitted use without a.
In that if we rezone it. So if we rezone it, they're not asking for anything else on it. You know, the other thing is, again, it's a, it's a good fit for the area, good landscaping, good neighbor. We've got a lot of senior living facilities ranging from independent living to assisted living to care that basically are in residential neighborhoods. And I think it would be fair to the people that live along, around the lake that are aging to give them an opportunity to stay on the lake as they age rather than making them move to some other part of town or out of the area. And that's all I have to say, Your Honor.
I would also point out that the lot on the lake is substandard, but it's not, it's not unbuildable.
Thank you. Yes, that's correct. So.
Further comments from the council? Aaron?
Imagine that, huh?
Yeah.
I lived on Detroit Lake for, for five years, so I know the area very well. Now I live on Long Lake, and I keep on hearing people say property values are going to go down with this project, and I'm not buying what you're saying. I live on Long Lake, which is a new development, and I have a sand pit right across the road from me. And this sand pit's not your normal sand pit, it's about the size of a mountain, and I don't think anybody in my neighborhood has lost any value in, in their house. I ask myself, would I want this in my own neighborhood? I'd welcome something like this in my own neighborhood. You know, the City Council, we keep on spending money on this, money on that, we have a company that's willing to come in here and make an investment, and we're not giving these guys anything. We're not giving them any TIF money, they're not asking for anything. You're bringing in over possibly 130 more residents in this community that, you know, their happy hour's at 5:00 and their wheelchair might break down. They're not going to cause a lot of crime in this town. You know, we're not chasing money, you know, don't get me wrong, you know, I can see how people have concerns, but I love this town just as much as everybody else does up here, and I think this is a great project. We'd be crazy not to bring this in. We are a retirement and tourist community, don't forget that. And you're going to bring more good quality people in this community in. And I know decisions are tough like this. In my development, I had to go through the, the stuff that went back in '08. I didn't know what was coming next to me, and it all panned out, worked out well. And I want to support something knowing that this would affect your neighborhood. And as far as traffic and safety, you already have, you got a convenience store down there, you got two motels, you got the fireside restaurant. I actually went today and drove down there and looked at this property and, you know, this is a nice development that this company is not asking anything from the city of DL, just your support to put this in there. So I'm for the project, I probably didn't make any friends tonight, but I want what's best for the city of Detroit Lakes.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? I've got an early flight in the morning, you know.
All right, so don't let Ron go after us. All right. I guess it was a long weekend. It was really horrible hunting. You know, I saw two tweeting birds, no squirrels, I heard one grouse. Oh dear, gave me a lot of time to think about this over the weekend. You know, I grew up on East Shore Drive. I moved in there 44 years ago, not by choice, because that's where my parents lived. They still live there, they've lived there, not 60 years, but 50 years. They're the longest ones on East Shore Drive of continuous habitation. They lived in the same house, and yeah, we've seen a lot of change. I moved out, but that, that really isn't where I'm going with this. It is a neighborhood. Back in when I grew up, I did play in the yard, I played in the street, and I played, I didn't play tennis, I didn't like playing tennis, but boy, did we have fun sliding down the hill into the street, and it was fun dodging cars. And we had, we'd go into the ditch and it was, it was a wild time and there was a lot of traffic back then. County, city annexed the property, the county widened the road out, so now the traffic creates maybe the same, maybe increased, but the traffic is a lot safer. We've got much wider roads out there. My dad walks every day, maybe twice a day, three times a day. I don't think I've got any concerns with him being on the street, other than, you know, maybe someday he'll walk down and be able to walk that same stretch of property living at Eventide. I don't know, I don't know what his plans are. But better location, you know, Eventide's coming, like Aaron said, they're coming to town not asking for anything. They want to be part of our community. They don't want to be part of a cornfield on the south side of town on Johnson Reeves Lake. They want to be part of our community. They want to bring people to our town and enjoy our amenities. I think we should give them that.
Okay, thank you.
One, one last comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And it comes down to the not-in-my-backyard comments. Ron brought it up, or sorry, the, another member of the committee or council brought this up, Broadway Avenue, we said no to that apartment building. And when we said no to that apartment building, we said, "Go find a different place." What they did is they did not build in the city of Detroit Lakes. I don't know where they built, but they didn't spend their money in town. I don't know what this costs Eventide to bring this to town, but they're bringing this to town and ought to spend billions of dollars and bring our, our community to a higher level. Thank you.
Thank you. So we've heard a lot of stuff. Have we heard it all? I'm thinking we're pretty close.
Call the question.
So I'm going to go ahead and take a roll call vote. This will require six positive votes to pass. Aaron?
Aye.
Wendy?
No.
Dan?
Aye.
Ron?
No.
Madeline?
No.
Matt?
No.
Natalie?
No.
Jamie?
No.
Dan?
Aye.
So it does not pass. I sincerely hope you guys will reconsider another location. It's a beautiful project, and I look forward to working with you in the future if we can. So, thank you. Okay, Dan, before we move on here, I want to move to item 6B because Dave Harmon is here. Dave? Wait a minute here. Do we need to take a break? Should we take a break? Dave, welcome. Pardon me?
Let's do it after you've done.
Yeah.
Every year I come in and give a report on our summer rec program and city programs. And I think I missed the last couple of years, we had something going on, but just to let you know, those years, we did keep doing all our programs, only not stop. I thought it was important for youth. And we could do everything outside and stuff, so the last, even the two years before this were marvelous years, but I have to say, I gave a little handout, and it just basically gives you numbers on what we do in town and that, we have the little rec building over there, and it has really bounced back this year where we had 53 to 56 to 60 kids a day over there. So that's all summer long, and that's about 50 days during the summer, so you're serving about 3,000 kids if you count, per kid, per summer that's utilizing that over there. We have staff that do various games, come in, do archery craft, t-ball, dodgeball, just a bunch of fun things, utilize the park, disc golf and stuff. So that program is still very a strong program. It's great. I get more and more calls every year about parents, about where can I send my kids? And I say, "If they're nine and older, we have a free program for you. Have the kids ride your bike over there, have fun." And it's just one of those things that's unique that I bring up every time I'm here. The rest of the summer program numbers, as you can see, t-ball, over 100 kids, minor league, major league, over 90 kids, little league, close to 70 kids, girls softball. We're talking about 390 kids that are participating in our summer program, and all this is run at a beautiful place that the city provides it, and kudos to them, they did a marvelous job once again out at Snappy Park. You can take that number, 390, during the week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and times that about three, because if you count parents and grandparents and kids, it's probably actually closer to four. You can see we're about, that's about 1,000, 1,200 people out at Snappy Park, just little league and kids programs a week, and that's about eight weeks during the summer. And it's just, kudos to everything that, like once again I said, the facility is awesome out there. Our adult softball leagues, they're strong, the men's, we have nine teams, coed has six. We have lost out on women's teams. We went from having, 10 years ago, having 10 teams, to down to 6 teams, down to 4 teams. And part of that is, is that across the whole state and the whole Midwest, softball, soul pitch softball is declining. And also because we have a strong coed, the women's that play in the coed once a week is enough. It takes them maybe two or three days to recuperate from that night of fun, I guess. But it, it, it's something that we will still go after the people, we'll advertise to see if we can get women's league back out there, but as far as usage of the facility out there, it really doesn't affect anything. Our water carnival tournament, we had 48 teams this year, again, just packs, it brings in a lot of usage of the hotels, the bars, the restaurants in town. You're looking at 138 games in two days. So the park will come up at 8:00 in the morning and it closes at 9:00 both days, and it's a great group of people that come from all over, Minneapolis, Grand Forks, Bismarck, a lot of teams from Fargo, a lot of Minnesota teams. So that is very strong. And then some other programs that we run, we run Twins Playings, they come into town, they've came into town the last four years. We always have more than 100 kids out there. The city has allowed me to do a flag football program out at Snappy Park. It's just really convenient with the parking and with all the constructions. We used to run it by the schools in town, it's just, the space is just not there right now, and as you see, we have over 100 kids in that program too. So when you look at these numbers, I've been at the community center for 11 years, I'm a kids person, these are record numbers. They've never, I mean, so kudos to the parents too, I mean, for keeping their kids active. The rec programs that we run during the summer, I think it's important in our day that kids are supposed to play, and we allow that in this town. With our beautiful parks, some pickleball carts, our tennis carts, our new park that we have out on the other side of town with basketball, that's what it's about. That's how kids grow, and it's nice that we do have a community that the majority of parents feel safe, their kids can get on the bike and go and play somewhere and stuff. So it's a marvelous summer, that's what I have to say.
Well, I had some great times at the rec when I was a little kid, that's for sure. But thank you for the report, Dave. We appreciate all your good work and certainly good stuff for the city. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
So due to my advancing age, I'd like to take a five-minute break. Okay, we're on the Community Development Committee agenda, and we'll go back to Chairman Josephson, and we don't need to do anything but item 5B, so we're on.
You're going to take action to actually.
Okay. All right. Dan?
All right. Someone else. How, how do we? You can make a motion and have it denied?
I would say based on the fact that the zoning didn't change.
All right, I think you should have it. If you're going to deny it, it should be biotopic, so there should be a motion. Yeah, right. So all, item B is consideration to resolution approving or denying a conditional use permit to allow senior living, planning unit development in an LB, that's not even that it. Let's just have a motion, I'll, I'll move to deny the conditional use permit.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to deny the conditional use permit, and of course, the reason is because we did not rezone the property. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right, item C makes it a little bit easier now, we go back to consideration to a resolution approving conditional use permit to allow a guest cottage at 2131 Memory Lane. I'll just get a motion on the table here. The planning commissioner recommends approval, the CDC recommends approval, and I assume we'll.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to approve a conditional use permit for a guest cottage at 2131 Memory Lane. Discussion?
Larry or Kelsey, you want to tell us what we're doing?
Essentially, you're allowing a conditional use permit for somebody to convert an existing three-story garage into a. into a seven-hundred-square-foot guest cottage, and there are six conditions listed on the resolution, which is.
Mayor and council, there should be a new resolution on your table with the six items.
Do you want me to read the conditions?
Sure. Why not? We're gonna be here all night anyway.
All right, I'll read slow then. Uh, conditions, number one is lot meet or exceed requirements for a duplex lot. The guest cottage cannot be more than seven hundred square feet or be more than fifteen feet high. The guest cottage be located, as shown on approved site plan, the guest cottage meet the same setbacks as the principal structure. The property now exceed twenty-five percent of previous surface requirement or obtain a mitigation permit for up to thirty percent of previous surface coverage. And number six, which was added, is that the guest cottage be connected to city water and sewer.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, the motion carries.
Item D is consideration of the first reading of ordinance five hundred, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Detroit Lakes relative to section eighteen to allow industrial uses as condition, conditional use in a selected natural environment, lake shoreline districts. Um, planning commissioner reviewed it, CDC removed it, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to give first reading to ordinance five hundred. Amending the zoning ordinance, uh, relative to section eighteen to allow industrial uses as a conditional use in natural environment, lake shoreline districts. Discussion?
This is just to clean up, uh, a D and R requirement. They already had done this before, but they added one stipulation that we need to retoo for us to allow this.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, the motion carries, and first reading is given to ordinance five hundred.
Item E is consideration to first reading of ordinance five oh one, adopting city code six one six, requiring licensing of short-term rentals. Um, again, each of the other people or groups, uh, approved it, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to give first reading to ordinance five zero one, adopting city code six one six, requiring licensing of short-term rentals. Discussion?
Larry or Kelsey, you want to just give a synopsis?
The shortened version is that instead of requiring conditional use permits, we would allow the license, short-term rentals annually. They still will have to use all of the conditions that were in the conditional use permit and plus some additional conditions. And they would have to, again, apply for that license annually and pay the three hundred and fifty-dollar fee. So, this would apply also to those properties that have already obtained a conditional use, but they will now be required to get their license.
Okay. Further discussion?
This actually helps city staff. They can then revoke these licenses rather than having to go through a formal process. If you've got complaints and they're charged with issues, we can either not renew in the following year or we can revoke the license mid-year. It just makes it easier and cleaner.
Okay. Further discussion?
Just a comment. I, I wish, I, I still wish, I'm gonna go on record saying, I, I wish that we would rethink this whole business of the, the short-term rental. Um, you know, I'm kinda caught between, I, I really don't like this current short-term rental. I think we oughta do it differently. I'm really not in favor of going to just licensing without changing those things, but I, this is the option. So, although yes, but I, I still think this is not working.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion's given. First reading is given to ordinance five zero one. Right? Are we on?
First reading, yes.
First reading, yep.
Yep. Um, item F is consideration to first reading of ordinance five oh two, amending the zoning ordinance to eliminate short-term rentals as a conditional use in residential districts. Um, planning commission and CDC reviewed this, recommend approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to give first reading of ordinance five zero two, amending the zoning ordinance to eliminate short-term rentals as a conditional use in residential districts. Discussion?
So, now, this goes back to all this VRVO stuff, right, as far as vacation rentals?
Yeah.
But, you know, you, you, I've been reading in the paper a lot across the whole country. And many communities, because of the housing shortages, they're limiting the amount of percentage of VRVOS that you could have in your community, because there's a lot of people buying up all these properties and becoming rental people. And it takes away housing that probably could have been sold for people that need housing. So, I, I know we can't do that tonight, but I, I would like to see us do something with that down the road, as very much what Jamie was saying on a previous item. Um, I just think we should look at this stuff, because we're getting a, a lot more of these. And, um, they're in people's neighborhoods and everything else. And it sometimes doesn't work out the way we think it's gonna work out.
Further discussion?
Well, just to point out, there is a, this ordinance include, or the other one, I can't remember which, includes a cap on the number of short-term licenses that can be, um, granted at the city of Detroit Lakes at a hundred. We sure can look at that down the road, but, but that's where we wanted to start.
But I'm saying, that, that might be too much even, depending upon.
Could be, but we wanted to start somewhere, and we sure can look at it around, so.
Yeah.
Further, further, further discussion?
Yeah, we're just eliminating this as a conditional use.
I understand that, yep.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries, and first reading is given to ordinance five zero two.
Um, item G is, um, off the table for this evening. Further discussion with staff that is gonna be taking place on that. So, moving on to item H is consideration, consideration to a resolution in the matter of decertifying taxi increment financing district number thirty-three dash one, CJ Incorporated. Um, CDC reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to decertify TIFF district thirty-three dash one. Discussion? All in favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Was that a ye or a nee?
That's an aye.
Motion carries. Anything else, Dan?
Nothing further.
Okay. We're onto the Public Works Committee. Madeline?
Yep. Item A, um, was basically just discussion review and discussion relating, related to preliminary street layouts for Summit Avenue's reconstruction project. I don't know if we need to go into any kind of detail tonight. It was just the Public Works reviewing. Um, item C, discussion regarding signs for no-through traffic on the alley by St. James Street and Willow Street. Um, there was just basically some discussion, um, deciding to wait and see a little bit longer, um, give that speed limit signs in the alleyways a, a chance to work. Um, item D, consideration to a resolution authorizing a preliminary engineering report for twenty-twenty-three street rail rehabilitation. This is just basically, um, John and Sean have been, uh, reviewing what, what streets might be, um, set to, um, receive street rehabilitation. So, Public Works authorize, uh, authorizes a preliminary engineering report for those, for that street rehabilitation.
Shall we have a motion?
I just made one.
Oh, seconded.
Oh, did you? Okay. I didn't hear motion, so I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, the motion carries.
I probably didn't use the exact word. Um, item E, consideration to approving a cooperative agreement with Becker County and Detroit Township for Highland Drive. As you know, um, we had, um, have had all the discussions relative to a cooperative agreement there, and this is just actually finalizing the paperwork for that. We, um, moved to approve that cooperative agreement.
Perfect. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to approve a cooperative agreement with Becker County and Detroit Township for Highland Drive. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, the motion carries.
Item F was consideration to a resolution ordering the preparation of an assessment role for Westlake Drive Phase Two, just the sewer services for the year twenty-twenty-three, and setting a special assessment hearing for five PM December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two on the proposed assessments for said projects. Public Works, um, moves to order that preparation and to set that special assessment hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to order a preparation of an assessment role for Westlake Drive Phase Two Sewer Services, and to set a special assessment hearing for December thirteenth. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Um, item G, consideration to accepting the city engineer's monthly status report. Um, John did, uh, report to us on all of those, um, street projects that we've been involved in. Um, if you cared to hear from him, we can certainly ask John to stand up and explain all of that.
I'd like to have him for the, just because everybody's wondering about Westlake Drive, just when it's gonna be completed.
Sure. Maybe we'll just kinda stick to those. Yes, Your Honor. Message received. So, Westlake Phase One, uh, they've got the curb and gutter down, paving's down. They're basically in cleanup mode, working on driveways on that. Um, I think they'll, they'll be in there the balance of the week, just getting signs up and things of that nature, probably looking at opening it early, uh, next week. Um, the same is gonna be true roughly for Westlake Phase Two from, from six to the river. Um, they're scheduled to pave on Wednesday, and it needs to happen Wednesday or it won't happen. So, um, that one, I think, will be open later this week or again early next week. So, just a little bit more time on those. That's really things of note, I would say.
But, but Westlake will be open even if it doesn't get paved, correct?
It will get paved.
And we'll be paved.
It will get paved.
We heard it here.
So, Madeline, we should have a motion.
Uh, we have, make a motion to accept John's status report.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded to accept the city engineer's monthly project status report. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Anything else, Madeline?
No.
Okay, we'll move to the Finance Committee. Chairman Zeman?
Only have one item here. Um, consideration of settlement agreement with Jamie and Susan Duraney. I'm gonna have, uh, staff to, uh, inform us about this.
Mayor and council, uh, hope you had a chance to just read through the agreement. I think the recitals does a good job kind of explaining the situation. Um, basically, there is, uh, was a water issue, and the, the rainy residence, um, was brought to the city's attention last summer. Um, as they're proposing to basically construct an outlet pipe to try to relieve that flooding. Uh, you could see that, uh, there was some question about the city's liability or responsibility, because we do have a stormwater pond that ultimately has an overflow that goes into that same wetland area. Um, I had proposed, uh, last summer that basically, you know, the city would consider paying half the cost for that outlet pipe in agreement that basically the property owners would sign, uh, settlement agreement and release. So, that is what's before you.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to make, make a motion, uh, due to, to the city own, oh, water pond that had overflow problem, ran off the neighboring property. I make a motion that we settle this for amount of three thousand, six hundred seventeen dollars and fifty cents for Jamie and Susan Duraney.
Motion's been made seconded to enter into a settle, settlement agreement with Jamie and Susan Duraney. Discussion on the motion?
I just have one comment. Um, I just think, um, the plant, when it was laid out and the engineering that was gone, that went into that, uh, development, I think probably should have been adequate for this. And I think it's a bad policy to, to throw money after, after this first solution that probably wasn't the city's item. So, I'm gonna be voting against this.
Okay. Further discussion?
Yeah, I live in that development, and Jamie Duraney deserves that money. I've been through everything that's happened out in that development. So, I, against you on that, Dan.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, aye. The motion carries. Do we know this, Jamie Duraney?
We might know it well.
Yeah, we might. Okay, I'm sorry. Anything else, Ron?
No, that's all, Your Honor.
Public Safety Committee, Chairman Winter.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, item A on the agenda won't require action, but an update on the hiring of a new, uh, fire chief. We've gotten applications in. There were fourteen complete applications by my count, and another eight or nine that were incomplete. Gloria reached out to those that were incomplete, asking them to provide the additional information. They haven't. Um, so, uh, we, uh, we have scored, uh, a group of us have scored the, uh, applications, and we are meeting on Thursday afternoon to consider who we might interview. Um, hopefully, we'll get interviews going in November. There'll be a couple of rounds, starting with a Zoom interview, and then moving on from there. So, I think we're on track with hiring, so. But we've got some good applicants. Um, some from Far Field and some from within Minnesota, North Dakota, so we'll see what happens, so.
And Dan, just for the public's knowledge, we're hiring a full-time fire chief, correct?
Correct. Yep, yep. Duties have, uh, expanded over the years that, uh, that's pretty much, we need a full-time fire chief now to fulfill all those duties, so. Good. Um, item B, I'm gonna eventually make a motion on, not too long, Your Honor. I know we're trying to get out of here. But we have, um, we have a new fire engine coming in about a year to replace engine number three. Um, and so, we can, uh, uh, we're preparing to sell the current engine number three. Um, we looked at different, uh, methods of, of how we wanted to do that, ranging from, um, putting in an online auction to, um, sealed bid. We decided that, or what we're recommending is that we go with a sealed bid with a minimum. What was the minimum?
One hundred and twenty-five thousand.
One hundred and twenty-five thousand. Um, and that we should, um, sell it now so that, uh, whatever department buys it can scrape up enough money to pay for it within a, within a year. So, um, the my, the motion is, is to, um, advertise for sealed bids for the sale of engine number three now. Again, with that minimum we talked about, uh, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Motion's been made seconded to approve the sale of engine three with certain stipulations.
Yep. One comment on that is that the reason we're going with sealed bid is it gives the, uh, our local fire departments or our area fire departments a chance to bid on it without having to pay a, a, a commission. So, okay. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Do you ever think of bundling that with a old ladder truck?
I don't know if we can take the hit.
Should take that to the park.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Okay. Item number C is a second reading, uh, and adoption of ordinance four ninety-eight, amending, uh, amending the administrative code regarding fire chief election and police department organization. You know, we saw this last month. It's cleaning up or allowing for a full-time chief, cleaning up some police department organizations. Uh, Public Safety Committee, uh, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to give second reading and adopt ordinance four ninety-eight, amending our administrative code regarding fire chief election and police department organization. Discussion on the motion? By the way, this will require a four-fifth vote.
Um, not the first part of the motion.
Oh, that's the second part of that.
I'll have another motion.
I get it, no.
Yeah.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Okay. And then, uh, the second part is, uh, recommend, um, approving, uh, the summary of ordinance four ninety-eight, administrating, amending administrative code. Um, basically saves us some money in publishing the code, and I so move.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded to give approval to doing a summary of ordinance four ninety-eight when we advertise that in the, in the legal newspaper. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Your Honor. That's all I, that's all I have.
Go to Liquor Gambling Control, Chairman Bulkey.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, item nine A, Bulkey, had a, excuse me, we had a discussion regarding part-time staff, uh, wages there. We discussed this. We'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, increasing part-time wages at the liquor store based on hours worked. Um, so that was the motion at the table.
Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve, uh, some new part-time staff, uh, and wages in the liquor store. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Uh, item nine B, consideration of the Polar Fest twenty-twenty-three sponsorship request. Uh, we discussed this at, uh, Liquor Gambling this afternoon. We would like to make a motion to, uh, donate five hundred dollars towards the sponsorship of Polar Fest for twenty-twenty-three.
Is there a sec? Second? Motion's been made seconded to donate five hundred dollars out of the liquor fund for the Polar Fest two thousand and twenty-three event. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Uh, Your Honor, writing a, adding a late arrival, nine C, uh, which is an autumn convivium, uh, that West Central Initiative, Initiative is holding, uh, November fifteenth from five to seven-thirty at the Hoots Historic Home Center. Uh, food and liquor will be, uh, there for consumption. Uh, so, we'd like to make, make a motion to approve.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to give approval to an event being put on by West Central Initiative. What was the date?
November fifteenth, Your Honor.
On November fifteenth. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. That should wrap that up.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, shall we just call in Vrenell for this next one? Madeline? Vrenell, will you tell us a little bit about, uh, the request? Vrenell, will you tell us a little bit about the request to approve the 2023 electric and water rates, please?
And I like your thigh. You're looking good. Thanks. Yeah, in early 2022, Public Utilities Commission engaged Missouri River Energy Service to do a cost service and rate study for both the water and the electric utility. Now, talk about the water utility first. And we were looking at a new one-half million gallon water tower. City engineer Pratt's updated us prices, that's about $8.3 million for that water tower now, which will probably start maybe 24, 25 between a month pricing. So we put that in the cost of service and rate study. We put all the projects that are in the five-year capital plan done by the city in the cost service and rate study. We took a look at internal needs to the water utility for what we're going to need over the next few years. And we also took a look at some of those assessable costs on reconstruct projects that we could possibly put into the rate. So in the proposed rate, there is a component to replace the water mains on reconstruct projects that will come out of the assessable cost now on these projects like Willow, West, Campbell and Linden coming up. So that will go into the rate base, starting in 2023. So the first proposed rate increase for 2023 for water will be about a 6.5% rate increase. That varies by meter size and consumption, so it's not necessarily apples to apples. The outdoor metering rate is a little bit higher than that because that outdoor irrigation has put a tremendous amount of pressure on the water system, especially when it comes to storage and pumping during June, July and August. This last year wasn't too bad, but 2021 beat us up really bad because of the drought we had in '21. So the proposed rate increase on the water side, including some assessable costs, will be 6.5% and that rate schedule is included in your packet for review. Any questions on the water side?
Mr. Roberts, what does the average home have? Is it a one-inch meter? I know there's a couple of different levels in here, but if you had to guess, the average?
Five eighths by three quarters.
Thank you.
Yeah, we know exactly what that is. I don't have to guess on that one.
All right, thank you.
So any other questions on the water side? So moving on to electric, we took a look at the needs of the electric utility. And just back up on the water side, we had between 2022 and 2026, you have about $18 million in the queue for capital investments on the water side. Between 2022 and 2026, we've got $41.3 million on the electric side. So you have a tremendous amount of capital investment needed on the electric side. And we also have an issue with Western Power Administration is increasing their rate January 1 by 16.4% to recapture costs from the 2021 polar vortex and drought conditions that's currently happening on the Missouri River. So we're gonna see about 16, well, we are gonna see 16.4% increase in WAPA. That's about $270,000 bucks a year to us. In 2018, we were scheduled for a 3% rate increase. We did not implement that 3% rate increase. So the proposed for 2023 is to implement that deferred rate increase from 2018 and use that to help offset the cost of WAPA increase in rates and start building funds for the additional capital we need, capital we need on the electric side. So 6.5% on the water, 3% on electric.
Got it.
There's comparison charts in the packets for you to read. You can see on the water side, even with the increase, we're very, very competitive. And we're very, very competitive on the electric, even with the 3% rate increase. So we're bringing a lot of value. The average household will see between water and electric increase will see a $3.53 increase in the utility bill.
Okay, thank you, Vrenell. Madeline?
I would like to comment too. If you look at our chart for the people that watch it on TV, that we're in comparison of 14 cities in our area, approximately the same size as we are, number one being the highest in Detroit Lakes. We're fourth from the bottom, so we have very good rates in our community.
Great. Madeline?
Yes, Public Utilities Commission has spent a great deal of amount of time studying this, listening to Vrenell, listening to Missouri River. And we move to accept those or to approve those 2023 electric and water rates.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the 2023 electric and water rates. Further discussion?
It's great news that the reconstructs are going on the utility. That's fantastic.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Anything further, Madeline, from the Public Utilities?
Nothing that's not on the consent agenda.
And could I ask you to take 11A, please?
Yes, consideration to a resolution designating the polling locations for 2023. I make a motion to designate those polling locations.
And just, just out of curiosity, are they the same as the current ones?
Indeed.
Yes.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to designate the polling locations for 2023. Discussion?
Well, I just think we should let people know it's Grace Luther for Ward One. Ward Two is Trinity Luther, and then Ward Three is First Luther.
All the Lutherans, huh?
Yeah, as a Catholic, I'm confused.
Catholics will be happy.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. I would like to recommend the name of John Flynn to be appointed to the Detroit Country Club Board to fill the term of Aaron Tate, who's retiring at the end of this year. That would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to appoint John Flynn to the Detroit Country Club Board. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Anything further from city staff that needs to be dealt with?
No.
Some information, the general election canvassing is scheduled for Wednesday, November 16th at 2:00 PM at the courthouse. A public discussion of the 2023 budget and tax levy pursuant to our truth in taxation requirements will take place at the city council meeting on December 13th at 6:01 PM. The Canadian Pacific Holiday Train will be making a stop in Detroit Lakes on Thursday, December 15th at 2:30 PM. And I think this is, we haven't had that for a few years, have we?
Right.
So that's, that's always a fun event. The 2022 city council meeting for December will be actually held at the Becker County Jury Assembly Room, which is on the third floor due to the remodeling project that's gonna be starting here at City Hall shortly. The joint governance meeting dates are before the council, and those will all be held in the Police Department Community Room. And the 2023 city council meeting dates are also listed, and those meetings will occur at M State in the auditorium they have there, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Nothing more from city staff? Aaron, anything more?
I got nothing.
Wendy?
Nothing here.
Dan?
Nope.
Ron?
Well, I just wanna say thank you to Dan Winner for being my partner in Ward One, being on the council, but he won't be with us in December because he's gonna take his wife to Hawaii. So it was a tough choice, so.
Yeah, tough, yeah. Being here with you guys or going to enjoy the beach.
Thanks for letting us work with you, Dan.
Yep. Dan, seriously, it's been a pleasure working with you. We don't always agree, but we discuss.
Madeline?
Nothing here.
Matt? Madely?
Nothing.
Jamie?
Nothing.
Dan?
Well, I will say something, Your Honor. It's been a great 12 years on the city council. I've enjoyed all the different people I've worked with. I think one of the great things about being on the city council is we could agree or and disagree sometimes. I mean, tonight wasn't the first time I went down in flames, but I feel like I can sure talk to you guys about anything. Next time, maybe we'll agree and work out a great compromise. Thanks for being a great council. Keep doing a good job and, and that's it. Thanks, so good luck.
I hate to see you go. So before I adjourn, I just want to remind the council to clean out your desks because this is all going away.